Welcome to Ridgewood Talks. Through this podcast, we will be introducing you to some of the leaders and legends in our village. We'll keep you updated about fascinating local events. We'll dig into the town's hot topics and so much more. But first, let me introduce myself. I'm Jeannie Johnson, the founder of Ridgewood Talks and Ridgewood Walks. The goal of these initiatives is to create a kinder, more connected, and more vibrant community. I'm thrilled to be hosting this podcast with my good friend and all-around wonderful guy, Jordan Kaufman. We look forward to meeting with you weekly and hearing your thoughts on who and what you'd like to learn about in our beautiful hometown. For now, be kind, do good, and enjoy this episode. Here we go.
Hi, listeners, and welcome to Ridgewood Talks. Our little hyper-local podcast is dedicated to discussing issues that impact the village of Ridgewood. One of the more popular aspects of our show is our interviews with political candidates, and this year's election is especially important. While national elections grab our attention, it's crucial to remember how our local elections shape our daily lives, and that's why Ridgewood Talks is sitting down with candidates for our village council and Board of Education. The questions we are asking the candidates came directly from our audience, and the candidates did not receive any questions in advance. So, without further ado, let me introduce you to Sheila Brogan, Ridgewood Public Schools Board of Education candidate. Sheila Brogan has dedicated her life to improving our community for decades, and I might add that she's offered her time and expertise to every age demographic. I have not met another person who can surpass the number of volunteer hours Sheila has given to the village of Ridgewood. She is the founder and co-chair of Age Friendly Ridgewood, whose goal is to promote awareness of the needs of adults 55 and over. She's part of the Ridgewood Community Task Force and Municipal Alliance Committee, which provides resources and information on substance abuse. She is the Chair of the Northwest Bergen History Coalition, which consists of 12 historical organizations located right here in Northwest Bergen County, and she coordinates the wildly popular, community-wide fundraiser, Ridgewood Unplugged, where local musicians perform at the Hermitage Museum, and they raise money for the coalition. For 36 years, Ridgewood has hosted a Super Science Saturday event where Sheila serves on the Steering Committee. Super Science Saturday is an annual half-day, non-competitive event that brings in over 1,500 area residents to celebrate science. In addition to that, Sheila has been a member of the Ridgewood Public Schools Board of Education for 28 years. Voters have consistently elected her to eight terms. She has served as the Board's President and Vice President multiple times, and has been the representative on the Communications Committee, Curriculum Committee, Facilities Committee, Joint Review Committee, Finance Committee, Ridgewood High School Home and School Association, the Village of Ridgewood Citizen Safety Advisory Committee, Ridgewood High School's Academy for Health Professionals, and the Garden State Coalition of Schools. She also regularly attends the New Jersey Legislative Sessions on topics related to the public school systems. Professionally, Sheila works as a geriatric social worker at the Bergen County Division of Senior Services. Her role there is to provide information and referrals for benefits and services to older adults and their families. Sheila is truly tireless and always upbeat and willing to lend a hand. I don't know her well, but I have called on her to help me with many philanthropic endeavors, and she has never turned down a request. I admire Sheila immensely and consider her a mentor. She has been married to her husband, Bill, for 43 years, and they have three grown children who are following in their mother's footsteps by contributing good wherever they go. So Sheila, let's get right into it. Thanks for being here.
Well, thank you for having me. That was quite the introduction.
Well, you have certainly served this community very well. I don't think that anyone can top, again, like I said earlier, the amount of volunteer hours that you have given to this community. So that's one of the first questions from our listeners is, what community boards, commissions, and committees have you volunteered on? Did I miss anything?
I think I started my volunteer work here in the community when my kids were small, and that was really at Trevelle, the elementary school, where a friend of mine and I started an intergenerational program. So I was trying to sort of marry my interests in older adults with my interest in education. And so, we started this intergenerational program, recruited and screened volunteers, who then came in to read to students and participate in classrooms and be an extra set of hands. That was pretty exciting, and that was my first foray into my volunteer work in the village. I went from there to be President of the Home and School Association at Trevelle, and then Federated, which is the group of all the presidents of the different schools in Ridgewood. So, I was President of Federated in 1995, '96 school year. It turns out, there was an opening in the '96 election for Board of Education member, and I decided at that point to run for election. And so, it was 1996 that I was first elected to the Board of Education with great enthusiasm. My kids were, at that point, two were at Trevelle, and one had just started at BF. From there, you know, I just branched out to do things that are of great interest to me. This is a wonderful community, and I strive to do the best I can to be of help and use whatever expertise I have that I can contribute.
Well, you certainly have. I mean, just based on the intro alone, wow, the impact that you've made is considerable. So, let's talk a little bit about this election. I know that it is a one-year term. Can you explain to our listeners why this is happening with just a one-year term, and then what do you foresee as the future after this one-year term?
Sure. It's sort of a little bit of a convoluted history. If people go back and they look at how the election's date changed, I think it was probably 2013. It was the second year of an order from the governor, at that time Governor Christie, to allow school boards to move their elections from April to the general election in November. We didn't jump on that at all, and then we let the year go by and saw so many of the different, you know, there are 600 school districts in New Jersey. So many of the school districts moved their election pretty much immediately, given the opportunity from April to November. We waited about a year just to see how this would work out. I was President of the Board at the time, and really tried to have multiple conversations about this to see where the community would land on whether, in fact, they were, it was of interest to move that election. That year, we had something like a 12% turnout for our April budget Board of Election. And knowing that in a November election, you're going to get a bigger turnout, more voices are heard. In further discussions, the Board decided that we would move the election to November. Four years later, because they were allowed to be in this conversation as well, the village council moved our election back into April. And then, one village, one vote, I think it was the following year, moved our election back to November. So, in that time, this is a long story, in that time, the terms of office were extended, because you can't shorten a term. So, when the move was made from April to November, your term got extended. In any case, and then there was a resignation from the Board, and through a variety of circumstances, the elections, if you look at a three-year cycle, became three seats being open for an election, the next year, no seat, and then the following year, two seats. We really wanted to get back to a three-year election cycle where there were two seats open, one seat, and two seats over a three-year period. So, this last year, we had our lawyer request to the court that we be able to design the election this year as one one-year seat and two three-year seats. After a lot of thoughts, I decided to run for the one-year seat. And the reason I did that is, I really did that for the good of the Board. I wanted, if you look at a one-year term, if it's a new person onto the Board, it's really a six to eight month onboarding. Get to know everything that's happening in the district, get to know school log, get to know finance, depending upon what committee you're on, policy. So, it's a lot to learn. School Boards helps a lot in that, the New Jersey School Boards Association, but still, the everyday learning is a lot. And then, you're still in your learning mode, and you're running for reelection, because it's a one-year term. I thought, when I understood that a seat was up, you know, we didn't know whether this would be contested or uncontested. So, I thought, for the good of the Board, it would be better that whoever's new to the Board has that opportunity to be there for at least three years. And really look at the district over a three-year period. We've had a lot of turnover in the district in terms of our administrative positions, and I wanted to have that sense of continuity and consistency. So, that's what the one-year term is all about. Hope that answers the question.
Yes, very well. So then, what happens after that one-year term?
Well, after the one-year term, we will be back in that rotation where, next year, there'll be one three-year term seat, and then the following year, two, and then it will, then we'll go into this two-two-one, three-year cycle. So, it is, I think, ultimately, this is a very good, positive move for the Board and for the district.
Okay, so let's go back to that. All of the committees that you have represented, I mean, it's unbelievable how many places there are to serve within that Board. And so, overall, I want to ask, what is the role of a Board of Education member?
Well, the Board of Education members primarily goal is to see that the district is run well. We only hire essentially involved in the hiring of the superintendent. Though we may sit on a Hiring Committee for other high administrative, central office personnel, we sit as advisory. But it is the five Board members working together that hires the superintendent. The superintendent answers to us. So, as I said, our goal is to make sure that the district is run well, and our superintendent is in charge of running the district. Our other responsibilities really are involved in budgeting. And although our business administrator develops the budget in line with requests from our staff, looking at our state aid, making sure, we've been very consistent in keeping our budget at cap, which is that 2% cap. So, our increases are aligned with the district's needs. So, we have budget responsibilities. We have communication responsibilities. So, I sit on the Communications Committee with Mohammed, and the two of us work with our Information Officer and our Superintendent to look at our messaging. That's an important role of the Board. We have these committees, and really, these committees are to give Board members opportunities to give input into decision-making. So, in terms of finance, we are always looking at the financial records. We are making sure that money is well-spent. We do each one of us at the meetings. We rotate, looking at the bills and moving the approval of bills. And each month, you'll see, when we meet on the agenda, who's responsible for reviewing the bills. So, it's worked like that. Our other emphasis is on policies and regulations. So, if you look on our website, you'll see a whole host of policies that regulate the district, the operations of the district, student policies, teacher policies, non-certified staff policies, facilities policies. So, all of those are things that we work on, and also the regulations that make sure that these are implemented with fidelity. You know, those are the roles of the Board. And, you know, the other is, we try to represent our community. But as we represent our community, we are really first and foremost looking at the needs of our students. We've got about 5,600 students in our district, and to me, that's key. I make decisions based on what I think will be the best impact, the most positive impact for students. That's my goal, and has been for the 28 years I've sat on the Board of Education. That is my primary responsibility. Now, saying that, it doesn't mean that I don't care about the budget, and I do very much, and I've been a proponent of always keeping it within cap. And I do care about listening to parents and their concerns, but it all goes and filters in to, how do we have the best impact for students? How is our instructional program the best it can be? And each year, I end the year, and I think aloud to myself, you know, what can we do better? How can we do better? And we are very lucky to have a great superintendent, Dr. Schwartz, right now, who is asking the same question and doing deep dives into our data. And are we really doing the best we can? Are we fulfilling our responsibility to our students? That's huge to me.
There's a lot to dig into there, so let's go with the budget. In the years that you've served, how many times has the budget gone over that 2% cap?
Well, my years on the Board, the cap has changed. So, when I first came onto the Board, I want to say it was a 4% cap. And that went on for a number of years. And so, you'll see that our budget was at and around about 4% each year during those years. Now, we also would have had referendums. So, when you're looking at the increases year to year, those referendums for building expansions, we had, the first referendum I was involved in was in 1999, and that was the high school building, the science wing, if you will, Gym 3 extending the campus center. I think we did a little bit of an increase to the library footage, too, at that point. And then, my next referendum would have been in 2004, where we did additions onto some of our elementary schools. Then, a bigger one in 2009, where we expanded Willard, Hawes, and GW. We did very large additions onto Willard and GW, a little bit smaller, but significant at Hawes. So, when you're looking at it, those, you have to separate out as increases in our budgets. And we also initiated full-day kindergarten. So, aside from those, I think our regular operating budgets were under cap, as far as I can remember. At some point, and I want to think it was during the Christie administration, and when we had really a financial collapse in the country, the recession, and we went to a 2% cap, which was, it was difficult. And that was the year, sometime during the Christie administration. We also lost all of our state aid. But again, we had a strong BA and a good superintendent in Dr. Fishbein, and we were able to navigate through that loss of state aid and keep on moving forward. Since then, it's been a 2% cap, which we've been able, again, to navigate, because we never in the district stopped looking at, as I said, what can we do better? But what can we do more efficiently? And with that, we've been able to manage with our budgets.
So again, going back to your comments about losing some of your administrative staff, this is a question, again, from one of our listeners. The Board has gone through a tumultuous few years. What was all the fuss about, and why did it happen?
Well, that's a tough one. You know, I would say that personalities clashed a little bit at times. But for the most part, you know, Dr. Fishbein decided that he would retire, and Dr. Gorman moved to a different district. We had turnover in our business office. So, it has been tough. We have, I think, grown, though, as a Board. Remember, we had three new members all at once, when Mr. Donnie and Mrs. Quack and Mr. Lambo all got elected at once. We had three new members, which is exciting, and everybody's learning, and learning how to work together and be productive. And I think that it took us a little while, but we are here, and we all came together on, as we had to interview for superintendents, we were clear on our goals and what we wanted for the district. And the interviews were so interesting, as we all came together and, you know, Dr. Schwartz accepted the offer to work here in Ridgewood. This is not an easy district. We are a high-performing district. Our community expects a lot, and they should. Our community is supportive of our district with their tax dollars, but with their time. I mean, the number of volunteers who are working tirelessly in our schools, booster clubs, new players, band parents. You've been there, Jeannie. You have, your children went through the schools. There's no end to the volunteers. So, this high interest makes it a focal point. And so, yeah, we went through some difficult times, but I think we've come out with a strong superintendent. We have a new BA now that's, I think, great. And new members in our business office. We're building a great new team now. And our principals have been with us. Many of our principals have been with us for years, and they have been the backbone of it while we were going through some uncertain times, if you will. Our principals kept our schools just, you know, moving right along. And we have the pandemic, which I think unsettled everyone, as you can well imagine. So, you know, the whole, having our students out of school in March, I mean, we were in March of 2020, when we had to, like, one, two, three, make sure that we were educating kids, and we were doing it remotely. Our teachers were proficient, but they were still learning on the job of this new, you know, how best to meet the needs of our students. Then, coming back the following year, only half a day, morning sessions and afternoon sessions, our schools were split, our classrooms smaller. It was anxiety, tension, build time. Again, with the, are we educating everybody? Are we, are we meeting everybody? You know, are kids' needs, are there, is there progress being made? It was a lot. It was a lot. So, you know, at the end of the day, I think we're stronger and better, and we are continuing to look at, are we missing anything? Are we not fulfilling our mission? Is there anything that our children not thriving? At this point, it appears that they are doing pretty well on all the statistics that we have.
That's good to hear. I've sat in on several of the strategic planning sessions, and one of the things that is really, yeah, it's been really interesting. And one of the things that is, seems to rise to the top in every one of these sessions is the mental health issues that our student body is experiencing right now. Do you want to touch on that?
Sure. But can I just touch upon the strategic plan? Because I may be a little bit of a geek sometimes about the strategic plans. Every five years, we are reevaluating and envisioning our future. And it's our future in terms of our students and the education that we're offering. So, for our survey that went out on the strategic plan, the fact that we had 1,100 people participate in the survey, students, parents, staff, community members, says a lot about the district and the interest in the outcome. As far as mental health issues go, there's no doubt about it. There's increased anxiety, increased depression. I mean, all the studies are showing that. Some are relating it to social media. And so, it is our responsibility to help our students be good digital citizens. And we're starting that social emotional learning, you know, in kindergarten through, we used to do Open Circle, and now we have another program that we're using. But the program is to help kids understand about the importance of relationships, and basically, you know, being stand-up people. You can't just sit and watch somebody get bullied. You need to step in and help that to stop, or report it to an adult in your school. So, in terms of use of technology, which some are saying is promoting it, and of course, cell phones don't help, we've put into practice this year where, in the middle schools, your cell phones are away in your locker. And in the high school, when you come into class, you're going to put your cellphone in a caddy. I was just at a home and school meeting where two of the teachers were at the home and school meeting at the high school, talking about this new, I say it's new, some of the teachers have been doing it for a couple of years, and so now they've implemented in all classrooms, they're putting away of cell phones. And, you know, they can see, there's less distraction. You're not, you know, checking your phone every time it bings, or somebody texts you, because maybe they're not in class, or they're in another class. And so, it improves relationships, it improves conversation, it improves focus in your classes. That's all positive. Our emphasis on social emotional learning has really, I think, been pretty effective, though we can't do too much in that. And so, we're always balancing, making sure that the social emotional component is there. But then there is also the challenge and rigor of the education. And sometimes, if a student is feeling overwhelmed by the classes that they're taking, or if their schedule is one where they are involved all day in the classroom, and then they, in the evening or afternoon, they're at a football game, or soccer game, or whatever, you know, it's balancing how many hours a day a student has to get everything they want done, done. Two years ago, and I'm really proud of the decision that we made to have the school day start later at the high school. I was, I must say, I was a little cynical of it in the beginning, maybe five, six years ago, before it was really a reality. And I was just reading about it, and I was thinking, yeah, is that really, really helpful? And then I took a deeper dive. Then I began listening to webcasts about it, reading about it, talking to other people, talking to some pediatricians, and looking at the student load in terms of, you know, what their days look like. And I became a proponent. And although it took the Board a while to make the decision to have this happen, but at that point, Tom Gorman was our superintendent, he had intimate knowledge of the, you know, the high school, the students, and, you know, he also was in favor of the move. And Jeff Nias, who's the current principal, was certainly a proponent for a long time. And, you know, we didn't know what the impact would be, but what we saw in the first year, which was last year, was positive from the students. And it really went without any controversy. Some of the sports programs ran a little later, but nothing major. And the students, we haven't had a final analysis of it, but the students that spoke at the home and school meetings, and who provided some feedback through our student rep on the Board, were all very positive, and feeling that they were more awake and alert in their first period of the day than they had been. And even teachers reported on that, more engaged. And that's good, because you don't want a whole period to be one that you're just want to sleep through, because you got up so early. So, it seems to be working, and that has an impact on mental health, and that's why I was talking about it. Full circle.
That was really helpful. So Sheila, I want to go back to the bullying issues, and I want to remind our listeners that one of the most tragic bullying incidents that took place probably in the whole world was the Tyler Clementi suicide. For those of you who don't know that, Tyler Clementi did graduate from Ridgewood High School. And go ahead and Google that. We don't have time to go into that right now. But I will say that his mother and father have started something called the Upstanders Movement, and that is exactly what you referred to earlier. If you see somebody being bullied, if you see someone being disrespectful to another person, your responsibility is to be an upstander, not a bystander. And I encourage everyone to go to the TylerClementi.com website, get yourself an upstander bracelet, and promote that cause, and also support the foundation, because the Clementi family is doing a great deal of good in terms of bullying and informing people. And Jane will come to your school and give a talk on it, and I think it's, would be really, really helpful if people looked into that.
Absolutely. That was a tragedy, a horrible incident. I actually know the family, and my heart broke. Their work has been foundational, and we have taken the pledge, our students have, being upstanders. And, you know, we talk about bullying, intimidation, and harassment with our students and with our staff. And, you know, it happens. Bullying incidents do happen, and we are required by law, and morally, we're required to, you know, investigate it and help. And sometimes, it's, you know, for our younger students, it's counseling. It's talking about, you know, why, and what prompted you to do this, and to think about what it is that you did, and why you did it, and then, how do I not do this again? So, you always look at these incidents, and, you know, what's the education? So you always look at these incidents and, you know, what's the education piece? What's the learning? How do I make an incident that happens educational? So that a student learns? And because here we are, we're preparing our kids for their future. We're not preparing our kids for the parents' future, you know, their, their paths. Our kids have got to go into a world that's more diverse than certainly the world I entered when I left high school. That requires more, I think, regulation in terms of, again, how much I'm using social media? Where am I getting my information? You know, there's that portance of that technology or literacy, you're right. So when I'm looking at something at the internet, is this true? And it's so different. And Jeannie, you'll remember too, growing up, it's so different. When I, when we were going to gather people together to do something on a Friday night, it was a phone call and another phone call and another phone call, right? And then maybe, you know, you get six people and there you were, you know, out to the movies or whatever you were doing. Now you can post it onto your, you know, whatever site you're using, you know, gathering at my house at, you know, and then going into town or whatever it is, and you'll get a crowd. And everybody will know that you did this and maybe somebody gets left out. And if I've left you out and everybody's posted pictures of having this great time, wherever we were doing, and you didn't get invited, hmm, boy, that's, that hurts, right? So again, how do we help our students reflect upon behaviors? And their responses, what we say to one another? How do we say something in a, in a kind way? Yeah, those are all important parts of this social emotional learning.
So Sheila, you've kind of touched with that answer. You've sort of touched on one of the, the questions that our listeners asked about defining respectful campaigning and what steps you're taking to hold yourself accountable for maintaining integrity throughout the campaign. I don't think you really even need to address that unless you want to, because I think your last answer really kind of covered that. Do you have any comments on that question?
Well, I'll say that, you know, my campaigns in the past and today are all about relationships. And so it's not disparaging anybody else's. It's not making comments about other people. It's about me, it's about why I'm running and what's important to me and how I guide my life. So that, those are my campaigns. And, and I have done campaigns sort of the old fashioned way, which is through, um, meeting people and talking to them. And even though Mohammed and Mary Lou and I are running uncontested, I suggested to them that we have some greet and meets in town, not a lot, but some. And we've had a couple and we'll have a couple more. You know, that way people can see us and our, you know, and why we're running and, and our interests. And they can understand us a little bit. We are, we have been invited to some of the Home and School Association meetings to give a little five minute talk. And all of that to me is about building relationships, having people understand who I am and why I do what I do and to answer questions.
It is important for our listeners to remember that this election is uncontested, which I find fascinating because of all of the upheaval that our Board of Education has gone through in the past five years. And now we don't have people standing in line to run for the Board of Ed, which I find interesting. And I would encourage anybody who's listening to this, you know, if that's not what you're interested in doing, fine, that's terrific. But do stay on top of things, get involved in ways that you can understand more about how the district runs. There are ample opportunities through your local Home and School Association. And I highly, highly recommend that you attend some, or if not all of those meetings, because it gives you insight into what's happening at your school, what's happening at the district. And in a lot of cases, what's happening at the community level. So it's a great way for you to become informed. So listeners, give that a go. Now Sheila, one of our listeners asked about guidance counselors specifically at the high school. And they have noticed that the counselors don't seem to have as much time for their students as, as might be optimal. For example, placement in the wrong section or missed opportunities that lead to closed doors later in the process. And they're wondering, how could that be improved? Is that something that the board should be addressing?
Well, I understand, just recently from the high school Home and School Association meeting that I went to, and I was listening to Jeff Nias. They are looking at the caseloads for the guidance counselors. We had Dave Bailey, who was vice principal and also in charge of guidance, has moved over to GW. So I think in some aspects, that was a gain, absolutely a gain for GW. A little bit of a loss for the high school. And so we're, we're looking at hiring and redesigning a little bit the guidance program. We have a guidance counselor, we've moved up to be sort of a head guidance counselor. And we have an interim guidance counselor right now. So there might be a little upheaval in, in the guidance department because of the changes, but he's looking at that. And so what happens with something like that? There's an identified issue, I think, brought to Jeff Nias' attention through parents and also looking at, you know, at his staffing. And he will do a deeper dive and analysis and then come to a recommendation will come through the superintendent. So he'll talk with the superintendent and whoever in the central office. And then whatever recommendation will come to the board is usually the process that goes. So there's always a study process. Is it something internally we need to do differently? Or is it caseload or what, you know?
I understand and I'm glad that the district is looking at that. Another thing that listeners want to know is, are you responsible for remediating any of the flooding issues over at the field?
Oh, sure we are, sure. I mean, that is part of the district's responsibility. When it is the board, of course, we are looking at, at the budget and, and wanting it to clean, be cleaned up. So again, the process is a recommendation comes to us to do X, Y, or Z on the field. And we make the approval through the board agenda. But right now, I mean, that's a serious problem that we're having. And of course, climate change is, has impacted all of us. And we can see that through the horrific hurricanes that just happened in, in the South. And it's interesting to note, I was listening to, I think it's the Army Corps of Engineers, who've been here in the district, looking at flooding all along the whole Hocus Brook from, that, that comes down from New York. So we haven't had more rain per inch, you know, and when you're measuring the number of inches that fall, but the intensity of the rain and what falls all at once is exasperating the problem. The, interestingly, the village is our partner in this because their fields are also flooded. And they have done extensive cleanup in the brook. And you are desilting a little bit. You're, you're taking down a level of that silt that builds up so that it could be a little deeper and hold more water. Right now at the high school, we're putting up wind screens around because our, it's not the water flooding the field, but it's the silt and the debris that comes up with the flooding. So those, we're hoping that the screen might prevent some of it. I would also like to see some more building of rocks and tall grasses to catch some of the silt as it, as it passes over that along the banks. As long as the DEP will allow us to do that kind of rock gardens, not, not walls, but with rocks and, and plantings. We're also looking at tarp, like they do at the baseball stadiums, where they tarp a field when it's going to rain. We're going to experiment with one, I think, with the, with stadium field. Again, we've cleaned out all the drains, so the water will drain off. If we can not have as much silt get onto the field, then the cleanups will be less and we'll be able to get our kids back onto those fields. So those are a couple of things that we're doing now. Long term, the village has called in the Army Corps of Engineers, take a look at anything that can be done about the stream, though DEP. And I think that's an important consideration is whatever we do here, we have to be careful about the impact of below us. So we can't make the flooding worse below us by restricting water so that, you know, it bursts out in another community. So it has to be carefully planned. And of course, the DEP has to be involved in anything that we do.
Well, that's a very big issue. So thank you for answering that question.
I want to be clear that the Army Corps of Engineers is a long-term solution. It is nothing that's going to happen immediately because when they came to speak in Ridgewood, they were like, this is, you know, five, 10, 15 years, you know, out. So that's why we are looking at some, maybe some immediate remediation efforts.
Either way, I'm so happy that, you know, you're working collaboratively and all these things are going to be addressed. Uh, right now, what do you think is the most pressing issue at the district?
Well, when I look at what we're doing this year in terms of our strategic plan, and that's the visioning of what we want to look like and do and be in, you know, over the next five years. It's a challenge when you're really trying to think about the future. The other are, are some of our instructional and curricular issues. We have realigned some of the math programs and the sequencing of our math programs from middle to high school to make sure of success in math. And so that's always a challenge. We're looking at our English language arts and had spent time evaluating it. You might've heard about the science of reading, you know? So we're looking at intentionally continuing that emphasis on phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary and comprehension. I was just reading a book about the importance of read alouds for grades K through eighth. You don't think a middle school is needing read alouds? But where a teacher is reading to students, then discussing what they're reading and answering questions. Because comprehension is built when we understand the context of what we're reading. So if you read a book, you have no knowledge base on the subject of that book. You may be reading the words, but you're not really understanding what you're reading. So you have to put your reading in context and, and understand the material. It's so interesting to read about the importance of reading aloud so that students build their knowledge base. And as they build their knowledge base, when they are reading the next book on this subject, their comprehension will be greater. Very interesting. So that's always a challenge for us. And inclusivity, DEI, if you will, that, um, the importance of the practice and policy of providing equal access of opportunities and resources for all of our students. So that our biases don't get in the way where, I don't think that student would really fit in this club or this activity or, or whatever. Got to let those biases go. We got to understand where we are and how we think about our student learning and make sure that every student has opportunities and the success they need, again, to be that adult in the world after they graduate.
Thank you. I just want to touch on DEI because I know that there are a lot of people that are opposed to anything that says, oh, diversity, inclusion, equity. I, I just want to remind listeners that if that is a sensitive subject for you, it means people that have learning differences, maybe people that get around in a wheelchair, people that might be blind or have hearing issues. We want those people to be included in on every single, every day experience, just like the rest of us. So I think DEI is a wonderful initiative and I really support anything that goes into that. So thank you for that. Now I just, we're just going to have to wrap this up real quick. So I want you to tell us, first of all, I want listeners to tune into the Meet Our Leaders podcast because there are a lot of the issues that we talked about on this interview today are touched upon on that episode where we talked to Superintendent Sworss, village manager Keith Kazmark and our chief of police Forest Lions. So they are all working collaboratively. And so there's very exciting things that are happening at the schools where we're having school resource officers. School resource officers are there for your children. They're dressed in plain clothes, so it's not intimidating. The district is also, again, cooperating and collaborating with the village of Ridgewood to remediate these flooding issues. So you'll learn a lot more about that if you tune into the Meet the Leaders episode. Now Sheila, I want to, again, just move on to the next question. I love this question because it really does help me understand what our candidates are interested in. So the listener here wants to know, who are some of the people that you most admire and respect? And that can be somebody locally, it can be, you know, anybody you want.
Oh, wow. Well, that's a tough one. You know, I tend to look at that more locally. So I look to our religious leaders, interfaith leaders in our community. And last year, as the Hamas brutally killed the Israelis at, at a concert and how they focused on working together and talking to each other and had religious services. When we look at the Holocaust Remembrance Services and we look at the other programs that our religious communities, I admire that. I really, I want that to be where we are as a community, that we're talking, learning together. You know, again, it, it's the leaders at the library who go out of their way to make sure there's programming for everyone. There's programming for older adults, there's programming for our students, there's programming for little ones. And the richness of the offerings every week are amazing. When I look at their schedule, I wish I could go to more of them. And then, you know, we have Access Week this week. And the committed committee for access, our access committee, making sure that we are appreciating all of the differences in our students, neurodiverse and mobility, whatever it is that our students are dealing with, that access committee, and for the adults in our community, access is, is a wonderful committee. So I guess when I look at what do I admire? I admire people who keep moving us forward in conversation and in activities that are meaningful and purposeful. And we do it intentionally so that we can build a better community, that we can be a community where everyone is appreciated, everyone has a part, everyone's voice should be heard.
That's beautiful. Now Sheila, how can people find out more about you and your campaign?
You know, they can come to the home and school meetings. I, I will be presenting there, myself, Mohammed and Mary Lou. If they would love to have us come and be in their neighborhood or be at their house and they would like to invite people in, we're open to that. It's a short campaign season. And of course, because I am on the board, they could always watch our Board of Education meetings. Because I think there you get a lot of information and you can see for yourselves the work that we do.
Are you opposed to anyone reaching out to you through your email address?
Oh, not at all.
What is the email address?
Well, my personal email address is smbrogan@al.com. So if it's personal or something that's related to the campaign, they could certainly reach out to me. And then my district email, if it's, if it's a district question that I can answer as a Board of Education member is sbrogan@rpsnj.us. We have new email addresses.
Yeah, that's good to know. Thank you. Well, that wraps it up. Thank you so much for sitting down with us today, Sheila. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Jeannie, for the nice opportunity.